The order of the Blackhawk County Border Supervisors for October 30th, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Eggsman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. And as we do, let's try to remember the eleven people that were killed in Pittsburgh in the last couple of days. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received.
I move.
Just a minute.
Second.
There is a amendment. We're removing item nine. That is not an agenda item. It was accidentally added. Drafting the agenda. With that, motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public? Let's see everybody from the public. Claims and payments? Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Two-five-seven, five-six-two-point-two-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Three-four-three, five-four-two-point-two-five. This brings their payables up to date through the bills in September, and we'll leave them with approximately a little over five hundred thousand in their operating account.
So they are caught up then on all the, what they were in the rear end?
Right.
Move to approve? Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, receive project updates from department heads, elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief update on our construction projects. Our paving projects are finishing up. Zeneta Road, that is completely finished now. Waverly Road, the crews are out placing shoulder rock yesterday, and that should be wrapping up in the next couple of days with finishing up by putting pavement markings down. And our Elk Run Road project, the intersection of Elk Run Road and Donald Street, that was paved on Saturday, and the only portion of work remaining there is some shoulder rock placed at the radiuses of the intersection there. And then that, that portion of Elk Run from Donald to Dunkerton, that should be complete. The pavement markings were placed last, last week, and they've all turned out very nice. Very good quality work by Aspro. And our Finchford Road Bridge Project, I'm happy to report that we're hopeful that by next Friday, a week from Friday, weather permitting, that road, that bridge should be complete, and the road should reopen. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other department-headed elected official? Seeing nine minutes approved for October 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
I am moved to approve.
Didn't we get a motion?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah. My second. Eggsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a report. Motion that the recorders report fees collected from Sandy L. Smith, County Recorder for the period July 1st, 18 through July 31st, 18, be received and placed on file with the county auditor.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and Tyler Technologies Incorporated for license and services for the provision of tax administration software in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars plus sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars in the annual maintenance to be approved as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Pete Burke and Chris Caffare, they have both reviewed the agreement.
That's sixty thousand years, ridiculous.
Okay.
Six, seven years, you pay for the whole thing again.
Pretty much what you have to pay, so.
Ridiculous.
One's implementation?
February 2nd, two, oh-two, oh-two, 2020. I'm rolling to that, because it's a special day. February of 2020 is the week.
Two, 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 two.
It's a great number. I like numbers, so.
You like numbers?
Yes.
I don't like people's numbers.
Well, I like dates like that, that's.
Any further discussion?
Maybe you can call me up when you implement it.
We will have a party, and we'll invite you, Frank.
That might be worth getting a tattoo with that on there.
I don't do tats. It's not gonna happen.
That way you could remember it forever. Any further discussion? Any questions for Kim? Other than we're not happy with the price? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Eggsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a resolution that the amendment to the minutes of the board, oh, never mind, that's the one I was supposed to take out. Line B, resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project LFM 1807, 7X, oh-seven, Jessup and Marquee Road Bridge overlays in C-54, Marquee Road over unnamed creek, SO-6, T-90.
So moved.
The amount of under ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Project contracted at one hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion on this? Kathy?
Yeah, these were three small bridges on our foreign market system, two on Jessup Road and one on Marquee Road. They've been completed. The overrun, one point three percent over, happened because of, on two bridges, one on Jessup, one on Marquee. The Jessup, one of the abutments, the north abutment, we weren't able to see the, the poor condition of the abutment before we were, the contract was demolishing a portion of it. So that was work that we had to add in to shore up that abutment, do some repairs on that. And then on the Marquee Road, that bridge, we ran into some unexpected work that we also had to do to complete the project. The Marquee Road, if you've been on that road, that, it's a significant improvement, that road. That bridge unfortunately was never, it was built with the wrong grade to begin with. It's now a much better ride on that road, and we will be resurfacing that roadway next year, so it should be a significant improvement on that road. So I'd urge you to approve this so that we can pay border contracting their final payment. And answer any questions?
Any questions for Kathy?
Thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Eggsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Motion to accept the resignation from Dustin Gomez as an assistant in the Blackhawk County Attorney's Office of October 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, motion that the personal requisition for the Assistant County Attorney full-time with a start date of as soon as possible after October 31st, and the county attorney's office is recommended by Brian Williams, County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, November 13th, in Boardroom 201, in Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Proposed vacation of McState Road originally established July 23rd, 1862.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution that the taxes on submitted properties which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement or of the public purpose acquisition be abated, and the Inspector County Treasurer to adjust their records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Eggsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a work session, discuss, discussion to discuss the potential funding for the E-911 Board's public safety software to replace the current software for thirty-plus years.
Morning.
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 I don't know where my backup is. I've got one guy with a gun behind me, so keep that in mind. This has been indicated to you before. If you'll recall, we used some of the anticipated overages with the budgeted, or the budget for the radio project to purchase services of a consultant for this particular project. At that time, we indicated to you the concerns associated with our software programs. This specifically is computer-rated dispatch, records management software, jail management software, the civil programs, and the mobile applications that are being used in the mobile data computers out in our squad cars and fire trucks. The goal at this time is to replace all of that in its totality. Right now, we've got a bit of a hodgepodge system that has been built over the last thirty years. The problem that we face is we could have a garnishment, let's say, for a, for a person that is currently sitting in the Blackhawk County Jail, and the two software systems don't talk, so we wouldn't know it. So there's a way to make improvements on this system, but the most glaring piece is that the software system that we currently employ, we've simply outgrown. We're to the point now with the addition of mobile data computers, with the addition of officer safety concerns. For, for example, when I first took office, Dunkerton didn't have access to our records. So they would make a traffic stop on someone and have absolutely no clue who they were, what they were, if there was a warrant for them, anything, they would rely purely on dispatch, though they had a mobile data computer in their car. So when I first started exploring and picking at this a little bit, the effort was to bring on Dunkerton, to bring on Gilbertville, to bring on Hudson, and the only way to do that was to fake the system into believing that these outside agencies were deputy sheriffs, because the system wasn't expansive or expandable enough to be able to encompass the needs of what current officers today need from purely a public safety and officer's safety perspective. By doing all of that, what we have now done is created a system where before, when I started having problems, it was a licensure issue. I needed to add more licenses so more people could access the system. I now have enough licenses. I've run out of space with the software platform, the way the software was developed. And the easiest way to explain that is, let's say there are two thousand and fifty-four records open, any place in the county at any given time. As soon, as soon as the two thousand and fifty-fifth records gets opened, everything ceases to work, and it's just the architecture that the current software platform was built on is limiting. And we hit that every single day. That means somebody in dispatch, somebody out on the road, somebody in booking, has to stop doing what they're doing and back out to allow somebody else in. Does that make sense? So we've hit a limitation of how the software was constructed, and we've essentially just basically outgrown the functional use of the software. We knew this day was coming, we just didn't realize it was coming now. So over the last ten years, I've seen the continual growth of the problems associated with the current software package, to the point where now we've all kind of gotten together and done some exploration, agree that a change is necessary, and the next step is working with the consultant that the leftover radio project funds were used to hire, establishing the request for proposals to put together a global package that brings all agencies, all municipalities, everybody in Blackhawk County together on the same software, on the same software platform. We are probably within a month of having an RFP ready to go, but having an RFP ready to go and not having any solution for how to pay for what that software system looks like down the road is why we're with you today and why the, the interest in the work session with the board. Because frankly, the 911 Board, the Consolidated Communications Board, and even the CGIS Board are not taxing entities. We can't generate the two to three million dollars anticipated for need for that software package. However, the 911 Board has been working with Susan, and we do believe that we have a payment capability to repay the bond associated with a three million dollar maximum expense.
When is that bond currently paid off?
Well.
The radios.
Oh, that bond was paid off, let me see.
Okay, so that one's paid off.
Hold on, let me, yes, that one is paid off. So, yes, the sheriff and Judy and I met, and we, we looked at the E-911 budget. Judy's current budget has about three hundred thousand per annual amount, and I, you know, getting close to that, that would be twenty-five thousand a month. Our previous bond for the equipment was a three point eight million. Part of it was funded by a gaming grant, and the remaining was funded by 911, and they paid three hundred and sixty thousand annually. They probably don't have that amount to cover that. Based on some schedules that Maggie produced for us, a three million dollar over ten year would be approximately the three hundred and sixty thousand a year. A two million over ten years would be approximately two hundred and forty-five thousand. That would be something that would be more realistic for the 911 to, to pay back.
How long has the radios been paid off?
They just were paid off last year, I believe.
So, so they didn't make a payment this year, then?
Hold on. Not in nineteen. They were paid off in FY eighteen.
Pardon?
They were paid off in FY eighteen.
Okay. If it's nineteen, then that budget will absorb that payment that they were spending before, correct?
When you say absorb?
Well, you won't have a payment.
It was not budgeted against, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, it'll go in the year plus.
Well, it just wasn't budgeted. We, we didn't budget it as an expenditure.
Judy's budget this year is showing that she will end up with an excess of about three hundred thousand.
What was the payment on the bonds?
Thirty thousand a month, or three hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Three sixty, and that was on three point eight million?
Right, but part of that was, we initially had a gaming grant that we put towards that, and then we started paying, and I'd have to go back to see how much actually 911 paid versus the, I, I don't have that figure right.
I'm sure the gaming grant wasn't any more than a million, would you?
Probably not. I think it was right at a million.
So you were probably looking at what?
Right, and the.
Two point eight, two point nine.
Is there any hard figure yet? Probably not.
We're somewhere between two and three million. That's where we anticipate being, and that's based on best guesses from that consultant.
Tony, why is there a reduction in the ability to pay if they've been paying the thirty thousand? Is there, why is there a reduction in that amount?
Because, as you know, those 911 surcharge funds are continuing to dwindle. What this access, or I'm sorry, what this excess is most likely going to be drawn from is access fees, what we used to call EDAX fees, to the agencies for accessing the 911 system.
So that was paid by each of the communities and sheriff?
Right.
And those funds are not available anymore for this?
The, the access fee funds are available. Those continue to be available because those are just the cost of doing business for the maintenance of the dispatch center, but, and actually more to the point, to the radio system. But the 911 surcharge monies that are paid to the state that come back to us in the form of repatriating those funds for the cost of delivering 911 services continues to be suspect.
Did they have an increase on that, I thought, a year or two ago?
About four years ago, we were able to equalize the wire line with the wired line, I'm sorry, wireless, cellular, and wired line surcharges. However, wired lines continue to disappear. How many people still have a home phone because of that fund?
We only get sixty percent.
Correct.
Of the cell phone cost. So when you pay a dollar on your cell phone, forty cents of it stays at state.
Correct.
How many vendors do you anticipate?
We, right now, are anticipating, because we're looking at tier one vendors, we finally kind of outgrown the mom and pop kind of approach. We're looking at three to five solid vendors. What we did within the last two years was bring some of those tier one vendors in to have them demonstrate what they can do. That was partially to build this consolidation of effort so that every agency saw the need, they saw the, the opportunity, they saw what those software vendors could do, and that's kind of what we're anticipating, somewhere between three and five. We'll probably get more than that, but there'll be lower tier vendors that will probably have the same limitations and concerns that, that we're currently hitting up against.
Sheriff, do you know whether this would be eligible for a gaming grant?
We're concerned that it may not be. We've already spoken with gaming. They don't like funding software. However, we're going to take a serious run at them simply because this affects every municipality, every county, the entire county, and it's public safety, it's tax abatement. It is, it's, it's, it's exactly why that commission exists. Even though they don't necessarily like funding software, per se, this is a, a unique situation that we're going to try and get them to take a look at.
It affects them too, out there.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, compared if they give money to some.
Well, right now, there's a, there's a computer out there running our software as though it is a deputy sheriff sitting at the casino. So, so they're another example of one of those entities that are taking advantage of, of the fact.
What draws that cost up on the total package, the amount of entities that are going to be in it?
And the complexities associated with it. It's not so much the package itself, because I think most of these tier one companies already have a package developed. It's integration, it's backward compatibility, it's data conversion. That's a huge thing for us. What we don't want to lose is thirty years of record, thirty years of data that we can continue to draw upon. And so the larger expenses associated with this transition will be associated with keeping all of our records now and having them accessible through the new software.
So with the capacity to add to it, I'm talking about another entity?
Absolutely.
I mean, I can't think of who that'd be.
That's partly why we want to, so I'll use the University of Northern Iowa as an example. Right now, they have a standalone software, or a standalone computer that has a deputy's login, so they can come in and they can see booking record from us. It's just a way of sharing, again, officer's safety information. But down the road, if we can convince them to, hey, this is another way for globally us to all share and feed and input information, right now, we kind of delineate responsibility. Waterloo inputs all pawn records. We all use them investigatively, but Waterloo has that obligation. There's, there's other outlets, there's other opportunities out there for this software package to be able to impact everyone favorably. And the reality for us is simply that the fact that we've outgrown the system now, the time is now to come up with funding to establish the next twenty-five to thirty years and what that looks like. But without the ability to do anything on that outset, we're asking you for the help.
What's, what's your implementation timeframe?
So the RFP, if it's ready to go by the first of the year, we will let, let's say January 1st, give them a month or two to prepare their responses to that RFP, give us a couple of, two to three months to review their RFP and start bringing them in for full-blown evaluation of their wares. We should be able and ready to start implementation. That would be very cursorily and very on the front end. There probably won't be a lot of, you know, wires being pulled kind of stuff. There will be a lot of data conversion and things like that probably by July 1st.
So during budget process, the decision would have to be made whether we bond for this, and who's gonna, how are we gonna pay for the additional potential of a hundred thousand a year that dispatches not able to pay for, or the E-911 funds are not able to pay?
Yeah, I think, I think at the end of the day, when we were talking, when, when Susan was running some numbers and, and reached out to Bergen and those folks, but in that two to three million, I think that the 911 Board is very comfortable in, in knowing that if we go over three million, it, it's pretty well a showstopper for us. If the cost of the project goes over three million, there's probably not the ability for the 911 Board solely to repay. Now, the hope is obviously that we can convince the gaming association or commission to, to take a look at that for the importance of what that is, the function of that software package or multiple software packages, and convince them to be good partners with us. But if at the end of the day, we're somewhere between that two and three million dollar and are able to do a bake sale here or there, or get a grant here or there, the likelihood of us being able to solely and purely pay that back through those access fees, through the 911 Board, I think is there. And really, we're focused on that two to three million, not to exceed three million.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors, too.
Just, just to let you know, you have backup now.
Yeah, I see, I see. Finally, they all show up.
Susan, when is the 911 radio bonds paid off?
They were paid off in FY eighteen.
No, no, the ones.
Oh, the radio bonds are going to be paid off in 2020.
February 2nd?
June 1st.
So we have another.
Couple of years.
A year or eighteen months on that one to pay off.
One other option I asked Maggie about, and I haven't discussed it with Tony, but looking at the bonding and the cost to issue bonds, although we might still need to, I mean, we're still looking at issuing bonds for roads and bridges, so there would be some shared cost there between some of these. But one other option I asked Maggie about was the possibility of loaning, the county just structuring an internal loan to 911 for this purpose and having 911 pay the county back with interest if we wanted to use some of our reserves for that purpose. And that can be done, too, which would avoid taxing at the point. I mean, we would be using tax money and using our reserves, but.
There's a lot of particulars involved, even with that theory, not knowing what our future budgets are gonna be. Obviously, we don't know what this is gonna cost, and we don't know if we're getting money from gaming. There's a lot of things that we're gonna have to figure out down the road. But they had enough to cover roughly the two point eight then, if you take the million off for gaming?
That's what we looked at, that they could pay between twenty and twenty-five thousand a month.
So it's pretty close, really.
Right.
Especially if the top dollar comes in lower than expected.
That's what we hope.
And then gaming comes in, you sit in a pretty good spot, really.
Right, right. We think this is terribly doable, and the reason we, we structured this as a work session with you, we want to get your gears grinding on it now, obviously, before it's time to start talking budget. But we also come to you as that beggar can't be choosy. We can't generate three million dollars upfront to be able to pay for this package, and we need it. This is what we're talking about as the essential functions of community safety, public safety. That's everything from booking to jail management to, to computer-rated dispatch. So we are, we're in a position now where this is one of those must-do kinds of.
But you're not really gonna know anything by budget. But you're not really going to know anything by budget.
Well, no, we're not going to know totals. So again, I present it to you as a not to exceed 3 million.
Yeah.
And then we shoot like hell to make that work.
Susan, if they have 300, E-911 has 300 reserves. Can you pay upfront on that bond to reduce the cost?
Yeah, depending on how 911 comes out this year, we could, they would have money and reserves that's possible that we could use.
Yeah, it's not like we're coming to you with absolutely nothing to bring to the table. We've got some options, as do you. But I think as a funding source, we need the help.
You just need the county to commit to bonding for not to exceed 3 million at this point.
Correct.
So does your backup have anything to add?
What were the radios on, how many years?
10.
The old 911 equipment, 10 years.
I can't believe we went 10 years on the radio.
We were actually 12 years before we ended the system. We extended that, that. Oh. Okay.
Any questions for me? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before us this morning? Any reports or information from the board?
I'll just mention that, I'm sorry, tonight, tonight at 7:30, the Sons of Jacob synagogue is having a remembrance for the folks who were murdered in Pittsburgh.
I just want to be early on this, I want to congratulate and wish happy birthday to Supervisor White. Sometimes people don't know exactly what day his birthday's on.
Does he?
I do, yeah. Also along that line of what Chris was talking about with 11 deaths, I hope over the next year, we can, our nation can come to a realization that we're all Americans and we're all here for the same purpose, to take care of one another and to make this a better place for everybody to live.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried, we are adjourned.